Holyoke City Council, the clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley. Governor.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Maldonado Velez.
Here.
McGee. McGivern.
Here.
Murphy Rambaletti.
Here.
Puelo.
Here.
I Rivera. Jay Rivera.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
All rise please for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Mr. President, do you need a point of order to-
And the city of Holyoke.
Suspend the rules?
And the city council.
Counselor Bartley, yes. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and ask that the senior member of the city council serve as president for tonight.
Second.
Second.
On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I was gonna make the opposite motion, but I don't think anyone-
The junior.
-would agree with me. President McGee called me late this afternoon. He has a family commitment, not an emergency, but something that came up rather sudden, so he will not be with us this evening. As senior member, I open the meeting. Thank Counselor Bartley for making the motion. With your blessing, I will do our best to lead us through this meeting. We are on Zoom. We're being recorded on Zoom. We're live on the access channel. We are being streamed. And we are full complement in person, so we don't need any special votes. Our only missing member is President McGee himself. With that in order, there were some items that were laid on the table at the last meeting. Item number one is a letter from the Mayor Garcia al veto of the CPA ballot question to be placed on the November 23rd local election.
I think, Mr. President, probably be a good idea if we take that up in concert with the committee report on that topic.
Motion is made in second to suspend the rules to go ahead also for discussion purposes with a committee report known as item 16E coming out of the Finance Committee, which is the legal opinion introduced by Attorney Bissonette and signed off by our city solicitor. On that motion to suspend rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Do we want to take it off the table? Item one?
I suppose we could.
For discussion purposes?
For discussion purposes, take it off.
And motion made in second to take item one off the table for discussion. All those in favor, any opposed? This was originally introduced to the city council on our April 18th meeting, was laid on the table after some discussion. We asked for a legal opinion. That legal opinion came in on the May 2nd meeting. That legal opinion, as we know, went to the Finance Committee for discussion, and the mayor's veto was again laid on the table. The mayor is asking that the ballot question proposed by the city council be laid, and this would be the CPA tax going from the 1.5% to the 1%, a question that would be put to the voters of the city of Holyoke, that this would be laid on the table, I'm sorry, that this would be vetoed, and his proposal is to do it at a future election. The most important, I think, to start the discussion is the Finance Committee met last week, we met with Attorney Bissonette from the Law Department, who wrote a very lengthy and a very thought-out opinion on why the mayor is allowed to veto this question. With due respect, we listened to Attorney Bissonette for a good half hour. We also had Counselor Jordan and others that presented a different argument, that it, both Counselor Jordan and Attorney Bissonette made points that are worthy of discussion and are worthy of listening to. Regardless, the opinion issued by Attorney Bissonette is the opinion that has been given to the city council and will be given to the city clerk. The ballot question is back in front of us because of the veto. We have some options there. We can vote to sustain or override the ballot question. We can vote to ignore it. We can not do anything if we so choose, but I think discussion is important at this point to see which way we want to go. So with that, the chair opened up the floor for discussion. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, I filed this original order to have this ballot question placed for the voters to make a decision on the tax burden that they bear here in the city. The reason that I filed the order in the way that I did was because we had been advised that when we initiated CPA, that any changes made to the tax, any modification at all, would need to occur in exactly the same fashion as the initial approval, as it turned out here in Holyoke, occurred. So I followed the proper procedures in order to put it before the taxpayers and voters of our city to be able to make that decision as is their right. Now, there are two competing arguments relative to an opinion on the matter, and I'm certainly understanding both sides of the argument. And I'm definitely not approaching this as an attorney. I'm approaching this as representative of the citizens and advocating for their right to vote on their pocketbook. And as I'm going around throughout the city, people have a lot of concerns about the burdens they're bearing with the ever-increasing costs, and this is an arena that the people have a choice that they can make on it. I do not believe a plain reading of the words in the CPA law that says the legislature will put it on the ballot and the voters will vote has a role in it for our mayor, with all due respect. And our prior mayor even acknowledged that there was not a role for the mayor relative to the first ballot question. So I respectfully ask my colleagues to send this to the clerk to be placed on the ballot as it has been properly voted by this body. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So basically speaking, as we did the other night, I thought we had a nice discussion with Attorney Bissonette. Essentially, here's the argument, but before I do that, I did want to say on the overarching question of, because there's really two questions here. There's one is, should we do, should we have this on the ballot? And that's a legitimate discussion in the council. We weighed all those arguments. Should the public be allowed to vote or not? That vote came down seven yes, six no. Basically, the argument that I myself had advanced was the fact that citizens should have a right to vote. It's their city. They should have a right to weigh in on whether or not they want to see the CPA tax up, down, low, whatever, whatever they wish to do with it, and that we created it by a ballot question, and we have to, if there's a desire to have it reduced, the state law is quite clear, it also has to be by a ballot question. So I took the position that I took some heat, whatever it was, five or six years ago, to put it on the ballot, but I felt it was the right thing to do for this community so that citizens had a right to have the CPA if they wanted. In the end, a majority did vote to put it, and we do have that here now, which is, which is fine, and they're doing a lot of wonderful work, no question about that. But now, the question is, citizens would like to have an opportunity to weigh in to see if it should be reduced or not. The only thing I'll say on that point before I get into the legal argument on this veto issue, which is a new issue, is I didn't find it persuasive, the argument in favor of the veto. Basically, the argument made from most councils, I suppose there's some, and feel free to weigh in, colleagues, but I believe the argument was made, don't vote for this on a city election, do it in a presidential election in 2024, and the theory being that there'll be more people voting. But I think that the argument about the city election, we have not shied away from city elections when it comes to these type of financial questions. For example, I hearken back to 2019. That was referenced here earlier about we had the school referendum question. There was a ballot question that was put on in 2019 to see if the citizens wanted to spend $155 million to fund two middle schools. $155 million, it was put on a city election. This question is only about a $300,000 reduction in the CPA tax. So $155 million, no problem. We can put that on a city election. This city council did that, I wasn't here, but this city council voted to do that and let the people vote, the same people who vote for us and will be voting for us in November. If they're qualified to vote for us, they're qualified to vote on a $155 million tax override question, they're not allowed to have a say this year on whether or not we should have a $300,000 reduction in the CPA tax. I mean, to me, that argument didn't hold a lot of water. Some people feel that it does, but that's okay. Now, as far as, but that was a debate we had, we made a decision, seven-six, it went over to the clerk. Somewhere along the trail, it then went to an override, okay? This got, the mayor got involved in this, and he override it. This is where I took exception with that, and this is the disagreement we have with the Law Department. This statute, Chapter 44B, Section 3, is really crystal clear, okay? It has a sentence in it, and I'm gonna read it. It says, "Notwithstanding the provisions of Chapter 59," which doesn't apply in this particular case, "or any other general law or special law to the contrary, the legislative body may vote to accept Sections 3 through 7." And then Section 16 says, it goes back to that section, says, "In the exact same way it was adopted is how you shall revoke it." Okay? So that's the operative language. And why is that sentence really important? The argument is really important because it says, "Notwithstanding any other general law or special law to the contrary." Well, that's what our charter is. It's a special law. It was adopted as Chapter 438 of the Special Acts of 1896. That law, our charter, which is a great piece of legislation, is what gives the mayor his veto power. And because it says, it has, it says, "Notwithstanding anything to do with that," it says, "You're gonna follow this exact prescriptive method in order to adopt this law." Okay? So put everything else aside, you will follow this state law. These are the rules. Okay? So that isn't what happened, because this state law says it's a vote of the legislative body, and if you go to the definition section of this statute, it defines the legislative body, it says it's the city council. And the question became, and we discussed this in Finance Committee, well, it didn't say the legislative body and the mayor, okay? It just said the legislative body. And so that was all that was laid out. That's what the legislature set up for a rule, and we should follow the rule. And so that's exactly what happened. The legislature of this city, the legislative body, adopted it, and the statute then says, "The city clerk shall place it on the ballot." Period. There's no mayor approval required, and I point out in here numerous other statutes on other ballot questions or these type of situations where the legislature makes it crystal clear. It'll say the city council, the legislative body, and the mayor, right? But in this one, it didn't do that, all right? So that is the legislature stating its intent. They're very smart people. They know what they're doing. They know how to write laws. They wrote it. They set the rules. We're simply following them. So now we come to Attorney Bissonette's opinion. He basically says that it should be the state law together with the charter, and this is why the mayor should be able to veto it. But the state legislature set up the rules. It says exactly, you won't do that. It isn't their state law together with the charter. And so there you have it. If anybody wants to tune into the Finance Committee discussion, that's what we talked about. This is, this is the, the point. I believe this veto is no questionably, without question, not appropriate, has no authority to veto it. And so that was the point I wrote up in about three pages of memo on it. And that's the, really, the long and short of it, Mr. President. The public should have a right to vote. This legislative body has already, a month ago so or so, put this, has already adopted this, and we should just move forward. The clerk, we appreciate the Law Department, we thank them for that opinion, but the clerk should now do what the law requires and place it on the ballot. And I will say, in other context we've had here, I will just add for emphasis, we actually had opinions from the Law Department where it even mentions council and mayor. And even there, the, this, our Law Department previously has ruled that the mayor's veto was not required, and he could not veto. So that's a past legal opinion. I mentioned that all in Finance, so I won't rehash all of that. But obviously, on the underlying point, it should be allowing the public to vote. This is their government. Number two, this council acted. We should honor the actions of the council, one way or the other, and we should move forward. And the clerk should do their, should place it on the ballot and allow the public to have their say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you for all that. I guess what I would say, I also wasn't on the council that voted this back a long time ago, right? When it voted? So whatever process was taken, I was not a part of that. I'm a part of this process, the process that's happening today, currently. And one of the things I would say, if we're gonna speak about having the voters being able to vote and speak up and have their say, right? The, the question, the way it's framed right now, it's only framed in one way, which is either you vote down or keep it the same, right? For me, it should be the option of being able to vote up or down, and that would make it fair, and that would make it in a, in a way where, when you're vote, when you're voting, the people that have a voice of actually wanting to add to it, they actually are able to voice their, their, their opinion by voting for it. That's not actually in the situation right now. So the way it's phrased and set up, it's not allowing the people that want to increase it to vote and voice their opinions. So it's not actually set up in a way that's fair for everyone at the moment. So I will not be voting for it tonight. If it's, gets reworded in a way where someone can vote up or down, then I could support it, but ultimately, it's not fair. It's, it's worded in a way where it's only favoring for it to stay the same or go down. There are some people that could possibly want to vote for it in a way where it goes up, so we're kind of stifling that voice by not, by not having that opportunity there on, on, on the ballot at the same time. So if we're gonna talk about having the people to be able to vote and have their representation, we kind of gotta think about that, the inclusivity of this. And I understand that in the past election that this was taken up during a certain time. I feel like there are certain factors that play into this that we're downplaying, and if we're gonna say that it has to be in the same circumstances or in the same situations so it, that keeps, so it keeps the continuity, ultimately, I feel like we have to take those factors into account and not downplay those factors, no matter how we believe or what, how we feel, just so that there is continuity and consistency in what we're doing in the city government. Thank you.
Are there any further discussion? So the easy one, I think, is the committee, Finance Committee report that the order was complied with and that we did have a thorough, as Counselor Jordan said, and I think I said, discussion with Attorney Bissonette, that that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
On item number one, Mr. President, I would just say we receive it and just, either just receive it, and that's it.
Motion received. Motion made in second to receive item number one. Item number one is been received. It's the mayor's veto of a proposed ballot question, as we know, that we put to the, you know, to the vote three meetings ago, and if we just receive it, that's fine.
I mean-
The veto stands.
I, I, I would argue, okay, you want me to weigh in on that?
I, I appreciate it, because I'm, I'm on thin ice here, because this is very unusual.
Sure.
And I do respect everybody's opinion, but a veto is, a mayor's veto is, is the mayor's choice. I understand the argument is that it should not be his choice on this particular proposal itself. But if a veto is to be recognized, the mayor has the right to veto it. A veto has to be voted to sustain it or to override it. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, and you make a good point, Mr. President. Basically, why I say receive it is I don't feel the council should get involved with a vote on it one way or the other. The clerk already received this. They should do what they're supposed to do under state law, whatever we do here relative to this veto, in my opinion. Recognizing the veto is, in my opinion, not appropriate, period. There's no authority to veto. Never was authority to veto this, and we should just simply receive it. Thank you. The mayor can have his opinion. With all due respect to him, who we do respect greatly, but on the other hand, that's, that's the end of it, as far as I'm concerned. The clerk should put, place it on the ballot because the council voted it, and they should follow what the state law is. And if they, I know they tried their best to reach out to the Secretary of State's office, they could not get any guidance in my conversation with the clerk on it. So as far as I'm concerned, now, other colleagues make points about a compromise to have this question and other questions. I'm open to that. As far as, you know, having another question, we discussed that in Finance, as a matter of fact, was Counselor Rivera's suggestion to have two questions, one up, one down. You know, the committee ultimately, and I, and the majority of this council ultimately came down the opinion that was a little too confusing to have up and down, but we could revisit that as well down the road, but as far as this veto, there's, there's no need to take a vote on it. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing to, to vote on. There's no override on that regard. So we just receive it. I guess we politely disagree, and we move on.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. Just a point of order. So when the council voted to approve the question to go on the ballot, it was sent to the clerk, correct?
Correct.
So the clerk does have it?
No. Anything that comes out of our meeting, the mayor is then given, the court then gives the proposals to the mayor, for which the mayor, mayor may not have, in this case, authority to act on, okay? To veto if he so chooses. Some occasionally are pocket vetoes where if the mayor doesn't act on it, it dies. The original vote is attached to the mayor's veto, the original document, both the committee report, the order, and the recording of our vote that evening. Now, that, that's right, right there, I'll stop and again say, this is highly unusual. That's why I, I'm comfortable with our Counselor Jordan just saying, with the exception, I want everybody to understand, you know, be transparent, that that order is right here attached to this veto.
Right, so it has to go back to the clerk.
But we have to act on the veto first.
Well, we can just receive it or it back to the clerk, right?
I don't know.
Why not? I mean, as far as, because it should and not, are you, I don't want to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
I mean, I, I made-
Counselor McGivern?
I was just trying to figure out where it was.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a hard time believing that, that the mayor doesn't have the right to make this video, veto, or that he somehow wasted all of our time by vetoing this proposal, this proposed ballot question, so I would make a motion to sustain the veto, and if we want to renegotiate the wording of this, send it back to committee and start over. Thank you.
Second.
Amendment has made in second that we take a vote to sustain the veto.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. So I would like to note that in the mayor's veto, he did not veto the contents of the ballot question. He simply vetoed the timing of the ballot question. So for us to start getting into a debate about what the question will be is to get really off point. The mayor did never veto the content of the question. It only questioned the timing of it.
I, I-
Right?
What I would, what I would say is just a little bit different. The reasons he issued, he cast his veto was because of timing, and what he wanted was a 2024 election.
Right.
Not the 2023.
Right, but he didn't suggest changes in language.
But he vetoed it.
I hear your saying, but the argument's being made that the question isn't fair, et cetera, et cetera, but that isn't the point that we're on, or even that the point that the mayor made.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Is my point. He simply wanted it at a different time, so he was not vetoing the concept or the content.
Correct, but let me put it this way. If the veto were to be sustained tonight, or the veto's not acted on, and depending on who you are, the veto stands, this original vote is done. So we, even for a modification, an amendment to a question for this year, a new order would have to be filed.
Correct, so I'd like to make a motion to table.
Motion to sustain the veto.
There's already a second.
There's no second to table, so I'll recognize Counselor Jordan.
Okay.
I second it, Mr. President.
So, um, Mr. Pres, well, he got to me first before he recognized you. Here's the dilemma. With all due respect to the clerk's office, maybe they, you know, in fairness to them, they take the whole pile and they walk into the mayor's office with all the paperwork, and that's really the day-to-day how this actually works. I don't think they're, they weren't making an opinion, in my opinion, in fairness to our clerk's office, as to this should have been presented, and they just hand the whole stack of everything that's handed over, and this stuff goes in, approved, approved, veto, approved, and most of the time, the mayor can veto 99% of everything. But this is different. This is a specific state law. All of our opinions, although wonderful, at the end of the day, either we need to get independent counsel, okay? Or, which is another item on this agenda, one of the reasons I wanted it, item two, because in my opinion, as I've crystal clear said, it's right here, once we adopted it, that should have never, when the clerk had, that should have never made it even its way to the mayor's desk. Have a nice day, it's over. Case closed, right there, okay? How it then went down the trail, for him to then say veto, somebody at that point should have said, timeout, you can't veto that, but it didn't, okay? So then it comes back to us as veto, so then we have this lovely discussion. So this is where we're at, but the point of it is, is we can vote on an override, we can, all these things. I don't think we should do it because it's in bad form, because it's illegal, number one, and as a general rule, we shouldn't do things here that are illegal. And so that's why I'm saying if we just receive it, then if you believe the argument that you, he can veto, then in your view, you've won, right? Because we didn't override the, we didn't, we didn't override the veto. And if, and if I am right, receiving just says, okay, we've received it, all right? And then it, that's sort of a neutral position, if you will. Now the clerk has to make a decision. Brenna has to then go and research this further and feel comfortable on the actions of the council of whether or not this mayor could veto this or not. Otherwise, we're looking at possible litigation, right? Again, because if this council says it's, quote-unquote, sustains the veto, and there isn't legal standing for a veto, now you've potentially violated the civil rights of the citizens to vote on a question that was duly adopted by a council that should have never been vetoed in the first place. See the dilemma there? So I know we all want to do the right thing, but I think the, the best course of action at this time is receive it, so you get it off the table, we could table it, but to, to take a vote on the veto is, is just, it's, it's out of order. It's, it's just flat out out of order. I will make a point of order if that motion is where we go with this, because there, how many times are we hearing at past meetings about state law preemption? Here are these people who pass the laws of Massachusetts, tell you right here in the statute what you have to do, and nowhere in there says the mayor. As a matter of fact, it says, notwithstanding the city charter of Holyoke, right there, and yet we're still gonna talk about a veto. Thank you, Mr. President.
I renew my motion to table.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I understand our attorney, Mike Bissonette, is on the line. Can we get him to weigh in on this discussion? Because I, I just have a really hard time believing that everything our city lawyers are doing to represent us or make decisions is wrong, and everything being said in this chamber is somehow overriding everything they researched to figure out.
Suspend the rules to let the attorney speak?
Second.
Okay, with all due respect, Mr. President?
Motion made in second to suspend the rules to allow attorney to speak on that motion. Counselor Jordan?
Under discussion. With all due respect, anybody that wanted to have that conversation, we sat there for, what, an hour, talking about this exact thing at Finance, okay? So we talked all about this. Everything I'm saying is a rerun movie. Everything Mike said is a rerun. We, we, we do respectfully disagree with each other, but at a point, I think- We, we, we do respectfully disagree with each other, but at a point, I think, with all due respect, I'm going to vote against this to have him speak again, not because of anything disrespectful to him, but we all had this. Anybody that wanted to be part of this conversation, we did it for a whole hour at finance the other night. And, um, to rehash all of this again is, you have his written opinion, we had the thing back and forth, um, we should move forward, um, and.
Counsel Reagan.
There you have it. So I, I'm going to vote against suspending the rules to have the law department speak on this topic since we invited them and had already had this whole conversation. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
Thank you. Um, first, I want to mention that Counselor Governor had already motion, made a motion and it was seconded. That's first. Second, um, some people weren't able to be at the finance committee meeting and I'm not going to get into the details as to why. So it is unfair because I found myself not being able to be at the meeting, that I would like to hear the comments or what kind of advice Attorney Bissonnet could give us. So I would, I would love to hear what he has to say.
Counsel Rivera.
Um, I, I, so I hear what Counselor Jordan is saying with the point with regards to tabling and not taking the vote on it because at the end of the day, if there, if we are breaking a law and we take a vote on it, it makes no sense to break that law. Um, and if we're not doing anything wrong, um, and it comes out that what he's saying is right, then we just leave it like the way it is and it goes on the ballot, there's no issue. I'm, I'm kind of okay with that. Not okay with not allowing the, 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 um, attorney Bissonnet to, to speak just because there are a variety of times where all of us as counselors have time, have the chance to speak and not all of us are attorneys, right? Not all of us practice this stuff on a regular basis. And for those that are, that's great and I love that we have that, um, expertise on the council, but that's not what we're here to do. That, um, technically we have a law department that does that. Now, do we need an independent counsel? Hey, if that's how it's feeling like, then I, I would be in agreement, right? I think it would be a waste of money, but at the end of the day, I would be in agreement if we need a third party to be involved to make sure that what we're, what is coming out of the city solicitor's office is not being biased, even though I feel like they should not be biased, right? That is not their job to be biased. Their job is to be, um, as completely neutral as they can be. But to not be able to allow him to speak when we, we regurgitate a lot of information on a regular basis and we do it for 20, 30 minutes is not fair to, to, to deprive others that couldn't make the meeting or people that are on, on the cable that want to hear that are, that couldn't make the finance committee meeting too as well. I understand that our meetings are long and sometimes it is repetitive and redundant, but this is, this community engagement and for me, that's one of the most important pieces here. Um, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Governor.
Um, thank you, Counsel. I just wanted to reiterate that many times I've heard in, um, our city council meetings that things are being purposefully repeated because the public is, tends to be watching the city council meetings and not necessarily the committee meetings. So I tune into committee meetings, I watch them, I don't necessarily come on Zoom, I just watch them at my leisure when I have time. Um, but I have been told repeatedly in these chambers that things are being repeated for the public who only watch the city council meetings. So, um, respectfully, I would like to hear from our, um, city lawyer. Thanks.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend rules?
Counsel Malanato Velez. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess on that motion, like, I'm up for two options tonight. One, either voting on the veto, if that is an option that we have. Um, I think following Counsel Rivera's comments, I'm also on the other idea of yes, we can table it until we get, uh, the actual answer as to if this is legal or not, but I am not in agreeance that the ballot question should go through. I think at the end of the day, we should wait for that legal opinion before we, because at the end of the day, this whole process from the moment the ballot question was put as an order from the beginning is now being called into question. So that part of that process was the ballot question coming in front of the people. So until we get that legal opinion, um, okay with tabling it, receiving it, but not okay with getting the ballot question on there. Thank you.
I renew my motion to table.
I'll second it. I mean, I, I agree with what the last.
Motion made in second that we table this, we won't discuss that, we'll take a quick vote on the motion to table. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails.
Okay.
Uh, the motion on the floor to suspend the rules to allow the city solicitor to, uh, address the city council, um, I would just caution everybody, the finance committee meeting did this as this council addressed the finance committee to do at our last meeting and we spent close to an hour on this.
Yeah.
Close to an hour. I don't think we need a repeat discussion of what took place in committee, that's what our committees are for. If you have questions for the city solicitor, procedural questions, I think that's fine. But as far as a full discussion, I mean, we might as well just meet four times a month and not have committees. That's just my editorial comment, which I'm not supposed to do when I'm up here. On a motion to suspend the rules, all those in favor, any opposed? Uh, rules are suspended, Attorney Bissonnet is available for questions.
Good evening, Attorney.
Welcome, Mike. Any questions for Attorney Bissonnet?
What you guys want? What's your question?
Isn't already?
Is he frozen?
Oh, no, he's here.
I think, I think he's okay. Was, was there a question for him?
Yeah, there's some questions.
Mike, I, we can't hear you. Are you there? Could you just let us know?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
How's that?
Mike, just a procedural question. The mayor vetoed it, we understand, uh, we've had your opinion with a law department's opinion, we understand there's a difference of opinion, we all, I think we all get that, both arguments have got points that are worth listening to. My, my question is procedurally, the original vote, the original order to put this ballot question on comes back to us attached with the mayor's veto, am I correct? Okay. So what's in front of us is, is the veto, which we have the option of voting to sustain it, voting to override it or doing nothing. If we do nothing, that original ballot stays with us, that original question vote stays with us. And I'm, I'm asking that one, I'm not sure.
It would be tabled.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be tabled, uh, on a vote of the council, remain on your agenda for further action until, uh, final action is taken and that would be to sustain or override.
And do you know if the Secretary of State has responded to any inquiries from the city clerk?
Uh, the city clerk and the solicitor have both enquired of the elections division of the State Department of State's office. We, laws we, we veto as well as our own, uh, section of the charter relative to. On that question of the mayor, let me just, um, clarify that the mayor vetoed the question. He did not, although that was the basis of his veto. As, as longtime members know, the mayor could have offered a, a amendment to that, um, but it certainly can be taken up in the future. Um, the other concern I have is that, uh, a statement made that a prior mayor in a prior law department had indicated that the mayor has no role in, uh, vetoing ballot questions. Uh, I would call attention to all, uh, to that question having been about the needle exchange, which was an advisory, non-binding question specifically excluded by state law, as Counsel Jordan actually pointed out in his memo. Um, I'd also note that in 2016, the original CPA ballot passed by the council to put on the ballot, that vote went to the mayor for his approval. Mayor Morse approved it, returned it to the clerk and it was placed on the ballot. Uh, so based on that precedent, uh, that is what, uh, likely happened with the clerk's office. Um, and I would also caution, uh, reliance on the language that said general law or special acts to the contrary. There is nothing contrary, uh, in the omission or the silence of the legislature with regard to the mayor's role and simple function of approving or disproving something passed by the legislature. Uh, legislature knows well enough not to be silent on those kinds of matters. Its silence here refers us back to the charter and to the two state laws upon which that section of the charter is based, to say that the mayor in fact does have a role to play in this CPA process and that would be either to approve or to veto. Any motions, any actions, any orders to either revoke or amend, the CPA is allowed under the statute. So for those reasons, we think that the mayor is entitled to, as we know, that the council is entitled to either sustain or override. I thank the council for its time tonight, I apologize for my length, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Any for Counsel Reagan?
So my question is this, if a plain reading of the law, which we have disagreement on from a vote of the majority of the council, is the only remedy that the majority of the council would have through the courts in this situation? That's to our attorney.
I think he's frozen.
Uh, depends on how you define majority.
Mike, you're going in and out.
Not sure if he can even hear me right now. He's frozen.
Mike, if you can hear me, shut off your video, sometimes that helps.
Hopefully this was in the budget for him. Gotta get this, need to get this poor guy another computer.
Yeah.
I think we got enough information from Attorney Bissonnet.
Okay. Um, Counsel Reagan, I know it's your question.
Yeah.
I would like the answer to my question.
Okay.
Ask him again.
I apologize.
Yes.
Yes.
Did you hear the question?
Sir, could you repeat it, please?
So my question is, since a majority vote was to put it on the ballot and there is disagreement relative to interpretation of the law, is the only relief by those withstanding on the question through the courts? Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions with the city solicitor? Counsel Jordan.
Just going to make a real brief, uh, comment on two points that were made. They were raised, I didn't bring them up here, but they were just brought up and we discussed them in finance. I would not read anything into the clerk in 2016 presenting the stack of papers to the, to Mayor Morse saying, oh, I received them, I signed off, that that means that the mayor has power to not do something. No more than now the clerk walked in with a stack of papers in the opposite and, and checked off veto. Um, I would not read any significance into that. The, the second, um, point is when you have all these statutes that say council legislative body and mayor, and you have this one that specifically says it doesn't have that, I would give you the guidance of the Supreme Judicial Court, a statute, and this is from the case City Council of Boston versus the mayor of Boston, it's a 1987 case, a statutory expression of one thing.
Yes, it is.
Is an implied exclusion of other things omitted from the statute. Again, I will come back to the point, these are smart people, they know exactly what they're doing, um, most of the time, and they have very smart lawyers at the state legislature that write these laws and if they wanted it to be mayor and city council, they would have wrote it, city council and mayor, just like they did in all the other ones, but they didn't. They had a very specific rule here and it says legislative body only. So, uh, there you have it, um, that's it. So we, we.
Does it say that?
We, we move forward and, um, you know, we just respectfully agree to disagree.
The motion on the floor to table failed, we've taken care of the motion to suspend rules and speak with Attorney Bissonnet and ask questions. The next amendment was.
Will you reconsider our vote on tabling, please?
We'll just renew the motion to table. I think we need to reconsider the last one.
Second.
There was a, but there was a motion prior to that motion.
We, we have two more motions and we have two more amendments, trust me.
But usually if we go in order, wouldn't it be the first?
We go in order and reverse.
Really?
Yes. You always, the last amendment is always the first one to act on, except the motion to table interrupts everything. So, the, the next motion is the motion to override, to, I'm sorry, to sustain the veto, which would be the choice of sustaining and upholding the veto or overriding it.
Motion to sustain.
We proceeding on that?
Well, we have to decide if we're even, there's enough votes to even take a vote on the override, to adopt that motion, even take a vote on the override. So let's see if they have a majority to even vote on the override, which I would obviously speak against because I think the reasonable compromise here is either receive it or as Counsel Malanato Velez said, either receive it or table it. Um, that to me makes sense and if they want to continue to get further legal guidance, maybe an independent review. There is still time, uh, to do that. Luckily you have, this is well before the 35 days before the election.
Just, Mr. Chair. Counsel Malanato Velez.
Just for clarity, we table it, there's no ballot question still live until we get the finalized, okay?
We, what we had, again, and, and, and I'm just telling you what's in front of me and I, I could be wrong, but obviously the number one thing in front of us is the letter from the mayor with the veto. Now, I asked Attorney Bissonnet, because just to make sure I was interpreting the fact that those original committee reports and vote back in, uh, the original vote was back in April 5th, I believe, and the veto took place in April 10th. Um, that, that, if nothing else, is attached to this veto.
So further clarification on that, and I, sorry, the question was asked from your finance, I didn't catch it, is there a deadline as to when we have to act on this veto?
Mm-hmm.
Before it expires?
No. No.
I always thought there was a deadline, but.
There's no stat, there's no deadline, Mr. President, on the veto itself, but there is a statutory deadline for placing questions on the ballot and that is stated in chapter 44B.
So, yeah, so I know there's like a deadline to get the question on the ballot. My question is on the specific vetoes, our deadline as to when we have to act on a mayor, on any veto?
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to sustain. If you vote to sustain, you're voting to uphold the veto.
I want to have a mo, a point of order, Mr. President. I, there was a motion to even take a vote on the override, I'd like to see if that passes first, then we can talk about actually taking a vote. There was a motion to have a vote on the override.
Who made that motion?
A motion.
Oh, Counsel Governor.
Counsel Governor specifically said to sustain.
Several times.
Well, I, you have to even.
It's the same, it's the same vote.
I disagree because actually have a vote to even discuss, to even take a vote on the override. We don't automatically go, we got to see if a majority wants to actually vote on the override.
Who put that motion forward?
I think what she's, she's suggesting.
Let's just table it.
I'm not suggesting anything, I just made a motion to sustain the veto.
Because then we're left with voting on her vote to have an override, which I raised the point of order, that that's not even a legitimate vote.
Right.
That's, that's totally out of order.
And, and that's a fair point that you are making with the exception, the law department and perhaps the majority of city counselors disagree with that.
Perhaps, um, but I will only say that, that question, you, you know, the law department makes an opinion on a great number of things. Uh, this council has elected to agree with them respectfully and disagree with them from time to time.
This council. This council is, you know, needs to make a decision, and
I would like to see that we actually have a motion to decide whether or not we should have this as an override vote or not. And then, if that passes, then, okay, fine, we take a vote on the override. But I would obviously like to speak against that. Or I'll make an amendment, I suppose, to that motion, if that's, if that's the motion on the floor.
Mr. President?
Councilor Rivera.
In all fairness, I'm probably gonna not vote to sustain, right? But at the end of the day, if that's what was asked by the fellow counselor, I feel like it should be respected. I agree with you, and I'm on your page, right? But at the end of the day, if she's asking to sustain the veto, or whatever it is she's asking, I don't think it fair for us to kind of rephrase and try to do something different than that in the moment. So I'm gonna, I side with you on this one, bro. Like, I'm there, right? I don't want to vote for something if it's illegal. Like, that's cool, but we're prolonging and doing all this extra stuff we don't really necessarily need, just we do the sustained vote, see if she gets the votes. If she don't get the vote, then we just, we go back to the piece. That's where I'm at with it, at least. Thank you, miss. Thank you for letting me talk.
Councilor Maldonado-Valdez.
Thank you. I guess too, in response to Councilor Rivera, like, either way, yes or no vote would still be illegal, so I, meaning, like, if that is the case, where it's not legal, then whether we vote to sustain or not, so I think, I mean, in respect to Counselor Givner, you know, I'm for, I'm for sustaining the veto. I think I originally voted to not put it on the ballot, and I'll be honest, when I saw the veto from the mayor, I was like, what? Like, I didn't know this was a thing that could happen. I was ready, like I said before, to campaign for this, you know, against it. But I think where I'm at right now is we should, I mean, get more information to make sure, and so I'd rather not vote on it. I mean, I, if I'm gonna do the thing, and I guess to my other fellow counselors, like, if we are gonna vote on the veto, I think if we agreed with it with the first time that we vote on it, saying not to put it on the ballot, then I hope that we keep that same vote. If we're not ready because of the wrong legality of it, then I'd rather just have, make the motion right now to table this. If I get a second.
Second.
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded to table the item. That is a good motion, no discussion. All those in favor of tabling, please raise your hand.
Joe, did you count them yet, or what? Are we good?
He wants to drink his coffee.
That would be a conflict of interest.
I think he did count them.
Clerk, did you count them? Okay, thank you.
Motion passes. This item is back on the table with the original ballot question attached to it. Item number two.
Do we dare? I don't know what the pleasure of the body is. Should we, I don't know if we, I kind of think this would be a good one to send to committee. You want to send this to Finance or
Motion to take off the table
Or Charter and Rules?
About Charter and Rules.
About Charter and Rules, Mr. Chair, over there? Okay. I make a motion to remove it from the table for the purpose
Motion made second to remove from the table for the purpose of referring to the Charter and Rules Committee. On removing from the table, all those in favor and opposed. Motion to refer to Charter and Rules. Any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor, any opposed, so moved. Item number three.
No new information, but I would make a motion to send this back to committee. It's been sitting here for months.
Ordinance committee?
Yes.
Motion made second to remove item three from the table, refer back to the committee on ordinance. Any discussion? All those in favor, any opposed? So moved. Public comment, welcome.
They left.
We have two members in the chambers who have two people, sorry. Former member, Councilor Patricia Devine has signed up for a public comment. Patty, welcome.
Helene had to leave, so she was gonna speak, but she's not here, so I really don't know where to begin. I can't believe this has been going on for almost an hour. What are people afraid of? Want to veto, to sustain the veto, and put it on next year? I question why the seriousness of, we've got to have it this year, we've got to have it this year, and all of a sudden, it's an election year for city councillors. And imagine saying, guess what? I put a ballot question on so I could lower your taxes. That's a great way to put it out there. It should be in 2024, where it's a lot bigger election. And the other thing I wanted to say, I think, was very, very disingenuous, the way Counselor Jordan talked about the city clerk, and that she just puts it in a pile and gives it to the mayor.
I haven't, I have it, okay? Calm down.
Excuse me.
You cannot mention names of the
Okay, I won't mention Counselor Jordan's name.
Please speak to the issue.
Okay, so I do think it's disingenuous
Personal attacks, never stop with her.
Disingenuous that you talk about the clerk like that, and that you say, all they do is put it in a pile and give it to the mayor. That is not true. So I really think you need to sustain that veto. I don't know why you're pushing for a vote this term.
The other person signed up for public comment in the chambers has left. We have two people online who have their hands up. First is Spencer Fox Peterson.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
My name is Spencer Fox Peterson. I am at 51 Portland Street. I am, first of all, just as always, putting my support as a homeowner into the Office of Tenant Protections. I think it's really important and vital, we take care of our working class members of our community, and they have quality living arrangements, and it also is good for people that own property, because if landlords are taking better care of their property, our property values rise. Now that I've gotten the Catherine Booth looking out of my mouth, I want to go focus on the police, as always. I want to do second Steve Superba's comment from May 2nd. Anybody listening, please go back and listen to what he said regarding Chief Pratt and how the tail is wagging the dog regarding police accountability. Secondly, I have been in constant correspondence with our government, and there's been very little movement on, from what I can see, regarding the police malfeasance that is going on. There's been another thing added to the list this week. The constable was impersonating an officer in another town. Please Google that, anybody listening, it's very important.
Thirty seconds.
This is a long, long-going, standing trend, and I find it interesting that we spent an hour talking about a tax, a 1% tax, and worrying about the legality and all that stuff, but meanwhile, the police are gonna cost us and are costing us money. And if spending a lot of money on policing kept us safe, we'd be the safest place in the world.
Wrap it up, please.
Police are third most expensive military in the world, and that's just our domestic policing. So keep that in mind. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Our second online speaker is Stephen Rosenbusch.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This was not what I intended to talk about, but there is some urgency to getting this referendum on the ballot, and somehow, it's been lost that many of the homeowners in this city, including myself, are tempted to walk away. My property taxes are among the highest in the city, and the CPA tax is not insignificant. I would submit that if the CPA tax was not on property taxes, but was on top of the excise taxes that everybody has to pay on their car, then the vote would be very different. As I read this, the mayor is trying to postpone the vote on the CPA tax so that people who pay
Thirty seconds.
People who pay very, very little in taxes to the city would not be affected. However, if they, if it was a surcharge on their auto excise tax, it would be a very different thing. The fact is, we need, we need respite in our taxes now, not in two years. I'm not sure I will still be here in two years. I may abandon this property. It is a very, very expensive place.
Stephen, thank you very much. Can we just have your address for the record?
I'm sorry. It's the old Skinner Estate, 1155 North Hampton Street.
Beautiful piece of property. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon?
I request a point personal privilege as the maker of the order for the ballot question, and I would like to make a statement to my colleagues. I filed
We don't have that on the agenda right now, so
But I was, I was specifically referenced in the public comment, and I just want it on the record that I filed it because it was the first time legally the question could be asked since the approval of CPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications, item number four. This is from the city assistant city solicitor Kathleen Deggan. It's in regard to the Community Preservation Fund's relation to the anti-Aide Amendment. It's an opinion. Refer to committee on Finance?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number five is the license agreement between the City of Holyoke and Edward A. Owen for business at 120 Front Street.
Yeah, Mr. President, I want to make a motion to send it to DGR, but I just want to get a second, but under discussion, if I could.
Motion made second to refer to committee on DGR. Counselor Barley?
I don't see, and there are in here, there are attachments, exhibits referenced, and I don't see the exhibits attached to this, so I'd like to get them sent. I just want to, to us, I'd also like to point out that the property owner, and is he the licensee? Yeah, the licensee is, is present, and I don't know if we're gonna, if I, if I could suspend the rules, ask a quick question through the chair to the Law Department, if I may, under suspension rules.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Make a second to allow the Law Department to speak. All those in favor, any opposed? So moved. Attorney Bissinette, Counselor Barley has a question on item number five.
Yeah, just through the chair, Mike, to you. Is this, I mean, this looks pretty straightforward. Mike, this looks pretty straightforward to me, except for the lack of the two exhibits. So A, is this a repeat from prior, and is this thing ready to go, to be approved?
Yeah.
Did he say yes? I don't know.
Think he did. I have no idea. Sounded like it.
I'm gonna make a motion to get Mike better technology.
I agree. I'll second that.
Mike, is this thing ready to go? Yeah, he froze again. So
Yes.
Yes, he said yes.
So just, just under, yeah, yeah, so Mr. President
Let me try this.
There you go. He's tried something else.
Yes, David, it's a extension.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw
It's an extension to allow him to complete the project.
Just approve it?
Yeah, I'm gonna withdraw my motion, Mr. President, and I'm gonna make a new motion that we suspend the rules and that we approve this tonight.
I'll second that.
Second.
Just under discussion?
A motion's been made and seconded after withdrawing the motion to refer to committee that we, I don't even know what it is in front of us, and I don't even know what our vote is on this.
It's a license, it's a license.
I've never seen this before, and I don't know how to vote. I have a lot of questions, I just want to know what we're voting on.
Oh, well, if that's the case, then I'll, so this is, this is a license agreement, so we're, this is a real property interest proximate to 120 Front Street. We approved this a few years ago after a long go-around with licensee. And because there's an interest from the City of Holyoke, we are giving him a license to build a ramp, a handicap, a disability ramp on the, across city property, so that it could access his parcel at 120 Front Street. Do I have that right, Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Owen was in committee, Mr. President, I don't know how many times, and in this body, I don't know how many times. And so, in reading this, other than we don't see exhibits, so one, I want to say that we've vetted this multiple times. Two is, this is a real property interest called a license. It's something that we're, we now vote on per ordinance, similar to what we do for real property and for leases. We also now vote, this body has to vote on licenses. And, I mean, I'm comfortable, but as I always say, if a counselor is not comfortable, then I will, I will withdraw that motion if I, if you insist, and I'll send that.
I would appreciate it. The copy in front of us not only does it not have attachments, we do not have the signature of the Law Department, we don't have the signature of the mayor, and we don't have the signature of Mr. Owen.
Say no more. So I'm gonna withdraw that motion, and I'm gonna renew my motion to refer this to DGR, because that's where it does belong.
Motion made second to refer to committee on DGR, is it, Counselor Jordan?
One technical question also for the clerk's office. Are we having any progress with MuniCode? I'd like the clerk's office. We actually passed an ordinance that our approval is required for licenses. I don't still see that ordinance on the books on MuniCode. So I, I've been asking for the ordinance itself to actually be published, because I remember when we adopted, no doubt, I'm glad this is coming, because this is the law, but I'm just saying, I don't think that's even online yet. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe, and I don't see that's our ordinance cited in the license agreement. So I would just mention a couple of those little housekeeping things when this goes to committee. Thank you.
Counselor Barley?
Yeah, and I'll second what Kevin just said, but it absolutely is an ordinance. There's, that's irrefutable.
But it's not online, Dave, that's my point.
No, I hear you.
Okay.
So what I'd like to say, Mr. President, I just want to make a friendly amendment to my motion to refer to DGR, that we do get the two exhibits that were not attached here too. So at the Law Department, we send them right to Jeff, and Jeff will send them to DGR Committee and, of course, the whole city council.
And a copy of the signed agreement.
Yeah, I don't think they can sign this, Mr. President, if I may, because, until we approve it. So this, this has to be approved by this board
Right.
and then it can be signed. But, Mr. President, we could, we
Licenses, licenses have to be negotiated and approved, and we're just signing off on them, is what the ordinance states. Counselor Barley?
Yes, so you're, you're right, but we, but they won't sign, so I believe what's here is that this is what's been negotiated? We now have to approve what's been negotiated at full city council, but let's do it through the regular committee process.
So to get some answers to all these questions, the motions, refer to DGR, all those in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed?
With the two exhibits, Joe.
Item six is from our fire chief.
Mr. President? Can I make a motion to take up item 36 out of order and possibly vote on the emergency CPA application funds?
Second.
I'll second that. I was actually gonna make that motion in a minute.
Motion made second to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving to item 36, introduced by Counselor McGee, to moving out of order.
Mr. President, I have a kind of like a situation with that same order, if I could clarify.
Counselor Israel Rivera, while I find that order.
Sure. So that order was supposed to be paired with another one, which is an emergency application that comes out of Yoni, the Department of Conservation, yeah, for Scott Tower. It's still there, but I think it wasn't on the agenda accidentally. So however, we can try to take them both up at the same time, if it's possible, that would be great. If we can't, then
How do you do that?
Can we figure it out? How to, how to, because I'm learning that process still.
It's not on the agenda. How do you do that?
What, what we have, and I'll answer the question, I'll answer both questions with the same answer. What we do have is a communicate, is a order filed by Counselor McGee at the request of Wisteriahurst Director Megan Seller about emergency funds that have been provided after a vote by the CPA Committee. On that paper, there is a second emergency fund vote for Scott Tower, which is and isn't in front of us, so we're gonna have to do that late filed.
Okay.
And I think that will satisfy procedure, and we can decide about Scott Tower differently. But the Counselor McGee, I know, he got, I think we all got the phone call from the Director of Wisteriahurst. I received no phone calls from anyone else on Scott Tower, so I have no idea how to comment on it, but I'm certainly willing to listen. But in front of us is item number 36. The motion is to approve the CPA request from Wisteriahurst. This is a recommendation voted upon by the CPA Committee for $135,000. This emergency funding is for, after uncovering the severe structural rot damage when they were painting the porch-facing Pine Street, the damage was uncovered after in the repainting The damage was uncovered after in the repainting project while scraping back the old flaking paint, the deteriorated state of the columns, and the upper being became quite apparent. The alarming state was hidden by the paint and the vines, wisteria vines themselves for several years. It was only until this repainting restoration project was underway did the issue come to light. The current contractor is working on the project, however, I'm sorry, Homer, estimate the porch at the best a year left before collapsing would, could begin. If that were to happen, the cost of repairs would escalate exponentially and become a much larger safety concern for the community. It's also important to complete this work at the timing, so that the ongoing painting work can also be completed. So this we have signed off and presented to us, and Counselor Israel Rivera is our representative on CPA, so certainly can answer any questions. I think we've, most of us have had some type of conversation or communication from the Director of Wisteriahurst. And also, there was an email with pictures of the rot, and it is, I've never seen anything like it. And I love the wisteria vines themselves, but I guess, you know, the good and bad about it is it, you know, it probably caused, was probably led to the rot itself, but probably certainly hid the deterioration from view. So, right now, in front of us is $135,000. Is there a motion on that?
I make a motion to pass the first reading.
Second. Motion made a second, we passed the first reading to adopt $135,000. It's an appropriation that's already been made, but we can do a first reading. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to adopt.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion made a second to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor. In allowing the CPA fund of $135,000 to be used by Wisteriahurst Museum for the purpose of preserving the, fixing the rot of the Pine Street porch itself. This project does go out to bid. I did talk to Megan a couple of days ago, so it is required to go out to bid. So the quicker we vote, the quicker we get a chance to go out to bid and see what happens. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor. If you vote no, you're voting against. Counselor Barley's name was chosen first tonight.
Bartley?
Yes.
Governor?
Epstein.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Jay Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Eleven Yates.
Counselor Governor, you don't have to tell us what, but do you have a conflict of interest? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm on the board.
By that vote, you've adopted the emergency. As I stated, the CPA, under the same heading, applications to be viewed by the city council, is an emergency application for Scott's Tower. It is for $44,500. I suggest if we're going to even to talk about this, that we put that under late filed and take it up under late filed and see what the feeling is of the body.
Mr. President?
Back to, what are we on, item six?
Seven, six, six.
We're still on 36, aren't we?
No, I think we.
No, we just adopted it.
We're good.
We were just talking.
The other one, A at the end.
Yep.
Okay.
Item six is a communication from the fire chief.
Receive, refer to copy to public safety.
Copy of the brush fire prevention plan itself. Motion received, refer to Committee on Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item seven, from Alicia Zoller.
DGR.
Motion made a second to receive the 2023 APR allocation spreadsheet and refer to the DGR Committee. I think everybody understands this process has been in front of us, thanks to Alicia, the Citizen Advisory Committee, the mayor, and the Community Development Office are receiving a lot of communications and lobbying for different, there's like over 80 projects that have been requested. So city councilors, we don't vote on this like we do, but similar to block grant monies, we certainly can give recommendations to the mayor and to the Community Development Office itself. And then motion to receive, refer to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number eight.
Finance?
Finance.
Motion made a second to receive, refer to the Committee on Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number nine, from the Historical Commission. Minutes?
Motion to receive.
Motion made a second to receive. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number 10.
Finance.
Receive finance.
Motion made a second to receive, item number 10, refer to Committee on Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 11 is petition for renewal of a junk dealer's license from William Sullivan.
President, you have to suspend the rules, take 11, 12 as a package and approve them both pending the.
Pending, second.
Motion made a second to suspend the rules to take 11 and 12 as a package. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. 11 is the renewal of a junk dealer's license for Mr. William Sullivan. This is at 107 Appleton Street. Item 12 is the renewal of a junk dealer's license at the same address for William Sullivan. On that motion, we do.
They're different addresses, Mr. President. That's the only, that's the catch.
Thank you, I missed that.
Yeah, 107 Appleton and Jed Day's Landing.
Jed Day's Landing, the second address by the Sullivan Company. On a motion to receive and to approve the renewals, is there any discussion?
Are they all paid up and all that?
Exactly what I'm looking for. We have yes, 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 and yes, meaning real estate, personal property, and excise taxes, all checked off. And 107 Appleton Street, and we have the same for the second address.
Carryover, any pre-existing conditions, if any?
Just a point of, who, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Who checks those off? Is it the auditor?
If I remember correctly, it's, the city court gets the answers depending, but usually from the assessors and the treasurer's office. Am I right, Irma? And the tax collector, even more important. That's why we have Irma here.
Very good. Thank you, Irma.
But yeah, no, they reach out, and they, and I, I used to be able to do this, the tax collector did sign off, okay. The granddaughter of the great William Burns signed off as tax collector. On the motion to renew, I think it's just a yea or nay vote?
Roll call.
Right. Roll call, clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to renew both licenses. If you vote no, you're voting against.
Bartley?
Yes.
Governor?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez? McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Jay Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Eleven Yates.
By your vote, you've adopted and approved both renewals for Mr. William F. Sullivan and Company. Item 13, petition of Juan Rodriguez at 62 Rose Street, non-conforming structure. Receive, refer to Committee on DGR. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item number 14.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Petition of Red Barn Growers LLC, new special permit for marijuana manufacturing establishment at 1 Cab Street. Motion to refer to Committee on Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Before we start the President's Report, I'd just like to take a moment, I'm not going to make a President's Report. However, I think there's something that's in order, and both Todd and others have asked that we do this during this moment in time. Our administrative clerks, as most of us knows, father passed away last week. We are extremely, you know, want to give our condolences to Mr. Jeffrey Anderson Burgos. Also, it's the father-in-law of Juan, Counselor Anderson Burgos, and we understand any time of passing is most difficult. And all of our thoughts, prayers, and others, you know, things will be coming forward from this body to let you know how we feel. And we just wanted you to know that, and we're going to do a quick moment of silence, but I'll reckon, not a quick, but a moment of silence, but I'll recognize Juan Anderson Burgos first.
Thank you, Counselor McGivern. I want to thank the city, the people in this room for reaching out to us. What can I say about that? Robin Dwayne Anderson was probably, no, was the most caring, understanding, loving, accepting human being I have ever met. There was nothing I could not talk about with him. He gave me the best advice. Although he's not my biological father, I feel that a part of me went with him. I remain strong, and I put on a face. I do, I put on a face for the sake of my husband and for my sanity. It is the most painful thing to lose a parent. As you already know, I had lost my mom. So I just, again, I want to thank you so much, and Dad, I know you're listening, we love you. Thank you for everything, and please, watch over us. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor, and again, if we could have a moment of silence. Amen, and thank you. We're going to committee reports. It makes a little bit more sense. I talked to Counselor Tomlin and Counselor Jordan. I'm going to step down as your president, acting president this evening, and ask Counselor Tomlin to take over the podium, just for the Committee on Finance. I think it would be easier if I just make the reports.
I won't even claim seniority over Counselor Tomlin, only because he's such a nice guy.
That's because I know you're going to want to talk about it.
Feels pretty good being up here, huh? Kevin, you were here, right?
Ah.
No? I think I can get used to this. No, just kidding.
January, January.
Let's get going here.
Okay, here we go. My hammer don't know how to act.
Everybody ready? Item 16A, the Committee on Finance, we refer to fiscal '24 CPA budget proposal, considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. This we receive each year from the CPA Committee. We did have Megan McGrath before us. She explained that the proposed and the appropriations that they're looking at, and they're always estimates, similar to like when we receive the numbers from the state for the governor's budget, the legislature, before all that. They're not final final, but they're good numbers. She worked very hard to explain exactly what they are. We're looking at a estimated total of $7,9,889, 591,574 surcharge revenue with the state match. A conservative number, as Megan tells us, of 118,315. They're hoping that number will grow as time goes on. But the advice, the advice that she received from the state was the goal conservative for this point in time. If these numbers increase, she will come back to us with those numbers for our perusal itself. I think everybody knows the CPA monies are used, 10% are used towards open space, 10% is towards historic resource reserves, 10% towards community housing. There is a reserve, a lot of the reserve is because of housing projects, dollars allocated that have not yet been approved, which the 10% right now would be $70,989 across the board for the three categories. The reserves are waiting for projects to stay within their categories as a reserve, and projects that can be approved once the CPA votes on it. They use 5% for administrative expenses. This proposal would be about $35,494. I believe they have one person that they hire, and with some other supplies and stuff that they need. Finance Committee recommends that this be approved for the CPA. As you know, all projects come to us for a final vote of, after they approve, after they approve them.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Can you share with us what the balances are in the accounts?
The balance in the reserve is the 461, 428. There's a $350,000 plus over the total years that, I need help from some of the other members of the committee. I know I wrote it down, but it's.
Briefly to describe it, just to help the chairman out a little bit on that, was there is a carryover that they're allowed in the different accounts, so that anything that's unexpended, that carries over as a starting balance. So it was several hundred thousand dollars, as I recall from the last meeting. The number 350,000 approximately, plus or minus $1,000 or $2,000, I believe, was the carryover that Megan went through with us at the meeting. So I believe that is the carryover. And as you recall, you know, so much has to be allocated in each of the different buckets, be it housing or the other different allocations. So they are carrying those funds because they weren't expended in the prior year. So that would be now available for the subsequent fiscal year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the help. That's the numbers I wrote down. I just couldn't explain it, Counselor.
Any other questions or comments? I believe we need a vote on this, Counselor?
A motion to adopt, because these monies were appropriated, we, no, I'm sorry, motion to pass the first reading. We are exactly, we are appropriating them.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion made a second, pass the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're in favor. Vote no, you're against it.
Bartley?
Yes.
Governor?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Jay Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous.
You approve the transfer, the amount of the CPA.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Jordan.
Just a personal privilege, I want to just give a couple of numbers to that question. I found my cheat sheet. Budgeted reserve had 355 in carryover, but we just spent 135 to do that emergency one. So it's going to be 355 minus the 135, and then the housing reserve had 180,000 rollover balance, so those were the two. I wanted to just share that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Next item, item 16B, Committee on Finance, whom was referred in order that there be and hereby appropriated by transfer in the fiscal year 2023. $117,541.56 as follows, from capitalization stabilization, 117,541.56, to capital outlay motor vehicles, 117,541.56. Considered the same, recommend the order be adopted. Counselor McGivern, Jordan, Puello, Anderson Burgos, and Tomlin. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Counselor Tomlin. Motion would be to pass the first reading. Capital stabilization account is doing great, established maybe a year and a half ago by the mayor with the approval of this body. The mayor Garcia has been making some, I think, good choices in terms of how to use it in keeping, you know, departments, you know, meeting their capital outlay needs. This is a request from the Department of Public Works. They're looking for some vehicles to replace some very old vehicles. The replacement, the old vehicles are 2004, these are, they're semi, they're pickups but with a semi dump on the back of them. I think we all recognize them when they're out in the street, and they're very well-used. The 2004 is, got 289,000 miles, and the 2001 has 195,000 miles on it. The EZ Dump is what they call their bodies. The replacements would be two brand-new Ford EZ Dump vehicles that the DPW would use for various work throughout the course of the day. The Committee recommends that the transfer be approved.
Any comments? Motion to pass the second reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Did we pass the first reading?
Yeah, we, I think we did that, didn't you?
I don't.
Okay.
I think we did.
Joe made a motion, okay, motion.
Motion to pass first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
All in favor?
Clerk will call the roll.
Clerk will call the roll.
Bartley?
Yes.
Governor?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Jay Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you approved the transfer. Item number 16C, the Committee on Finance, whom was referred there, that there be and hereby appropriated by transfer in fiscal year 2023. $47,000 from a heavy motor equipment operator, 47,000, to R&amp;M Pools, 7,000, R&amp;M Fields, 30,000, and R&amp;M Vehicles, 10,000.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, thank you, Mr. President. The Committee met with Tom Reynolds from the Parks Department and Carl Rossi from DPW. The heavy equipment motor operator, as we know, those positions have not been filled throughout the year, therefore a surplus. If any positions were filled between now and the end of the year, he still would have enough money to fund the salaries. The transfers, repair and maintenance into pools. repair and maintenance into pools, supplies, a lot of this is chemicals for our pools this summer. I forget exactly why the budget was short. I think it might be the prices gone up on chemicals, but there might have been a cut in the budget process last year. The big one is the thirty thousand dollars from McKenzie Field. This will go hand-in-hand with the committee report coming out of DGR in a few minutes. The thirty thousand dollars is to do the lighting at McKenzie Field that is in dire need. Our high school teams play there, tri-county play there, and very soon, next month, the Blue Sox will be starting. We also rent the field out to the Blue Sox. We also rent the fields out to the Elms College baseball team itself. So these, this would replace the lighting and bring the field up to date. It's playable, but there's been some tough situations with some of those lights are completely out. And the repair in vehicles is for a dump body on a vehicle that is down to fix it, ten thousand dollars. Committee reports recommends the adoption of the transfer.
Counselor Bartley.
Mr. Chair, the chair, Mr. Chair, when do you anticipate we're gonna get copies of the contracts for the Blue Sox and for the Elms College?
I believe the Blue Sox contract is in front of us now, isn't it?
I don't think we received it.
I don't know if we have that.
In Elms College, I don't think we ever received.
I knew Elms College was playing there. I didn't realize until last night when we were talking about it. But that's a good question. We'll perhaps ask the administrative assistant to check on those contracts. I thought the Blue Sox was in front of us because I was reading it last night, but I don't know where it...
We draft.
Sounds like we have the draft, but not the...
I don't think we had an official communication, Mr. President. Why not?
Maybe it was what Matt provided us. Okay.
It's what Tommy provided us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we do, we should take an annual vote on that.
We're required to do that.
Required to, right, in the contract?
That's why we should.
Any contract. We'll have our administrative assistant try to get, reach out to get the contract from Elms College and for the Blue Sox. Counselor Bartley?
If we could just get communications sent to us for the first meeting in June, I think that'd be sufficient. We could probably suspend the rules right then and there. I mean, because we have reviewed, for the most part, the draft for the Blue Sox, and how can the elements be much different, right? So I mean, why, I mean, we can all be prepared for that meeting, to re-review the documents, to take, suspend the rules, take a vote that night. That'd be my two cents. Especially with the Blue Sox starting up June...
Seventh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. June seventh.
Yeah, and I think our next, our full meeting and first meeting is June sixth, I believe.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Izzy, how am I doing? Okay. Motion to pass the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
All in favor?
Second.
If you vote yes, you're voting favor, and vote no, you're against it. Clerk will call the rolls.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givenor? Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
See, yes.
Jay Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
By your vote, you approved the transfer. Item sixteen, I think we're on D, Committee on Finance, whom was referred that there be and hereby appropriated by transfer in the fiscal year 2023, twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars seventy-one cents, as follows, from sergeant, ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents, patrolman, twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-six cents, for a total of twenty-three six forty-two seventy-one, to injured on duty, twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two seventy-one.
Motion, I may second, to receive and pass the first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This was referred to committee for the purpose of a discussion about injured on duty. The Finance Committee had a good discussion with Chief Pratt. We went over all the particulars, mostly in general, telling us that he could not get into specific individuals' names or even imply that a certain individual has been out long-term or short-term injured on duty. As we know, that injured on duty takes place. Sometimes the safety officer, police, or fire may end up in the ER immediately. Doctors are examining the person, and the injury is immediately vetted, and certainly the city gets the benefit of knowing what happened in the ER in terms of what happens next. Any injured on duty is also referred to work connections. They vet on behalf of the city. The reported injured on duty makes some determinations, if it's short-term, long-term, and Chief Pratt said some of these things are as quick as a sprained ankle. Someone's gonna be out for maybe ten days. Certain injuries result in off, desk duty, soft duty, so to speak, which Chief Pratt said isn't just keeping people busy, but they actually put them to good use in the police department, performing different tasks that are necessary, especially where someone might be out. And some become long-term, which Chief, the chief talked about. The he-keeps tabs on the long-term, they're revisited on a regular basis, both with work connections and with the individual's own doctors, in terms of the legitimacy of the injured on duty and the appropriateness of something that's long-term. Once the person is cleared, obviously, they go back to work. Occasionally, we get into a lot about this, but a long-term may become a retirement disability, which we sometimes get to vote on those when they come before us, but those are possibilities for someone who's never going to be returned to the ranks of the police force or the fire department. The committee did its job as to what the city council asked us to do, and this appropriation now is in front of us for a vote. This, again, is the vote that we take to, for accounting purposes, when anyone is injured on duty, short or long-term, just to put the salary into a different line item for tracking purposes. The committee recommends that we now vote for the transfer of this money.
Any comments or questions? Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just, this is a little bit off-topic, but it's along the line. I'm gonna go through the chair to the chair again, because when, when we had the chance a few years ago, we tuck up that chance to take various tours in the summer. And one thing I don't think we, I just did one a few months ago, of HPD and of HFD, but that would be a nice, just a thought for the president to think about, just to set up some tours, because we don't have to take a bus ride. We just walk, just go there. And I remember years ago, Pete, when we took the tour of Holy Rock Water Works.
Oh, that was an accident.
We hopped on the bus, and we took a ride out to Southampton. So I know that's off-topic, but it's just kind of, just, the Finance Chair's report just reminded me. So I just want to have you, just have you think that over when you're, when you're convening amongst all your city council presidents, all you guys get together and gals get together, I'm sure, and maybe think of a plan for...
That sounds like a great idea, that the more...
That'd be nice, if you were guys and gals would consider that.
More informed we are, the better we are as city officials.
Copy that.
Absolutely.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Mr. President?
Oh. Mr. Rivera?
Yeah.
Counselor?
One comment.
Go ahead.
And like, so I'm gonna vote for it, and it's procedural, I guess. I guess the one thing I would like to point out is that, like, with regards to anything that comes to the police department, we technically are not able to ask questions, it feels like, and we get the least amount of communication or information with regards that, of anything that comes out of their offices. And right now, over the last, like, two or three months, I've been bombarded with a variety of phone calls around things that are going on that I have not even heard about, like, via communication. So again, I'll vote for this, and I'm gonna be, like, keeping the procedural thing going on. But at the end of the day, we as a council should really think about how best they can communicate with us so that we have some transparency and know what is going on in the department on a regular basis. Because there are some times where we get communications, but there are times where we don't get communications. This is off-topic, but at the end of the day, somebody had sent to me before, has mentioned to me before, where we could use our power on the buck to be able to hold people accountable with regards to communication and letting us know what's happening. So eventually, the council should be able to take this mechanism, so that way we are clear on what's going on with our city employees. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I would just note, in this particular situation, the individuals are covered under HIPAA laws because it's a health-related matter, and so they're covered under privacy laws that the department has to follow. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan?
I will say that, you know, we're obviously allowed, maybe not necessarily the medical component, but certainly the financial name, how much people are paid, whether they're, what their status and how they're being paid, that is public information. One suggestion to my colleague, Counselor Rivera, he may want to consider is, he might have to talk to the president about it, but putting together some sort of executive session, you know, at some point, if it becomes a matter where the information does not come before the body in a public forum, maybe it's time that, you know, if there's certain questions we should have as a council on executive session, you know? So I know in your capacity as chairman of public safety, maybe that's something you want to consider, talking to the president about, or the appropriate people. Something to think about.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak against that idea, that suggestion. I think that's a very dangerous precedent, especially when you consider the exceptions to executive session, and then the requirement to probably contact legal counsel for, for the union, for the individual. I think that's, I think that's a, I think that's a wrong-headed approach. And frankly, if we're gonna go this route, then, or even consider going this route, I think we need to get a legal opinion before we even do anything of that sort from our law department. Thank you.
Thank you. And to Counselor Rivera, I, when this order came up and we had questioned it, we had the chief come in. Actually, that night, the next day, I came in and said that we didn't pass it that night because there was some questions from his colleagues, and I called Chief Pratt. And I've also asked Captain Moriarty, I don't know if several of you got that, that stream, we get emails from Captain Moriarty, keeping us informed. So, I mean, I think any one of us has a right to ask any questions. And some things, of course, with names or, you know, the HIPAA, they can't, you know, divulge that information. But anytime I've asked Chief Pratt or Captain Moriarty or any of the sergeants I meet on the street about things, I think they've been very open and transparent about anything. So, I mean... Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I would just add that. I think that's, I think your last comment there is a very good one. I've had a very good relationship with the police chief and the captains, and they've been very forthcoming with information. If you have those type of meetings, maybe that is the better forum. But obviously, if we were to do something as a council, we would always do it in compliance with whatever the law would allow. But, you know, there might be a way around getting people feeling comfortable that they're getting the information that they need. I certainly feel like I am, from the, from the police leadership, whenever I've asked.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? No? Motion to pass the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
With this, Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're in favor of this transfer. You vote no, you're voting against.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givenor?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Jay Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, we approved the transfer. Thank you. Item number sixteen E, we already took care of, right? Sixteen F, the Committee on Finance, whom was referred in order, referred back three twenty-one twenty-three from Mayor Joshua Garcia, list of historic preservation-related repairs needed on city buildings as requested by Counselor Jordan, Counselor Bartley, Counselor Ivy Vera, and Counselor Bacon on an order filed April fifth, 2022, and this was tabled on three twenty-nine twenty-three, have considered the same, recommend that the order has been complied with. Counselor McGivern?
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Bacon.
All in favor?
The committee did an extensive review with this. We were fortunate to have both Megan McGrath before us from the CPA Committee. She went over some of the history, some of what the CPA Committee has done in terms of municipal projects, and especially with preservation projects. We also had a remarkable presentation from Sean Shidi, who is, worked with Mayor Garcia and worked with a, putting together an extensive list that the mayor presented to us. And Sean went through this almost building by building, but explaining, you know, the number of different projects that could get into the hopper in terms of CPA and/or perhaps even ARPA monies as we, as we speak. It was very informative. We thanked both our presenters for bringing all this to our attention. As Counselor Tomlin said, this was in response to an order filed by Counselor Jordan, Bartley, Bacon, Counselor Israel Rivera, and put in committee some time ago. So at this point in time, I think everybody's seen the list. I don't, we have to go through it, but be glad to answer any questions. But at this point in time, we think the order's been complied with, and much appreciate this information, and the CPA will be working on it. More important, the mayor will be working on having the respective departments or correct city official put it in front of the CPA.
Thank you for your report, Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, very briefly, again, want to thank the mayor, want to thank Sean, extremely helpful. This is exactly what we were looking for. You know, one of the concerns that the CPA Committee had expressed is they didn't have public projects to work on in terms of building repair and historic preservation items. So now they have the list. This is exactly why we're city councilors. We're here for the purpose of seeing problems and coming up with solutions. And this is a classic example of putting these dollars to work to fix city problems and save taxpayers' money. Very happy to be part of this with my colleagues, and we can check the box on this one being done and look forward to these repairs being done. So, great job by all involved. Thank you.
Any other comments? Aye. Counselor Bacon?
I would just say that it's really good to get them officially on the radar, even though we'd had a lot of rather informal references to the needs. It just makes it more formal. So it's great.
Counselor Rivera?
They're not on the radar till they're actually applied for.
That's it. They'll apply. We'll be applying, that's for sure. There's money there.
This morning, I was walking up the steps in the front, and I saw, like, the stone steps are, like, withering away. And I'm like, yo, I sent a text to the mayor, like, we gotta do something about these steps. Apply for CPA, bro, because you could see the dust from the stone, literally, right there in the front step.
A lot of people have been walking up them steps over the past hundred and fifty years, so... Counselor Bartley?
About the clock.
Oh, yeah, the clock. Oh, time.
We had it fixed.
We're moving right along. The bell tower. That's right. That's another one.
Fixed once, so...
There's, there's plenty of projects that the city needs to work on, and I'm glad my colleagues had brought that up to the CPA, because it's important to use, you know, these are our citizens' tax dollars and to get the work done for our city, you know? Our buildings is important, so...
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Has anyone noticed?
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, has anyone noticed the slate roof, the pieces on the side of the building?
No, I haven't.
As you're entering, like, if you gotta pay your excise tax, if you look to your right as you're entering through that door, there are, like, two or three pieces of slate roof, roof on the ground. And I'm thinking, if a piece slides off and hits someone...
Oh, that's, yeah.
Nah, you wouldn't feel it.
Yeah, okay. I think we all would feel it.
Me too, but I would.
You'd be dead. You wouldn't feel it.
I would be dead with my luck, yes.
How about we get Sean Shidi on that one tomorrow?
Juan, can you call Sean for us tomorrow?
Who's ever watching this meeting, please, we're gonna check on that, she can go on the slate roof.
My goodness, yeah, absolutely.
Counselor McGivern, I'm enjoying being up here, so, no, wait a second.
Well, if we vote that the order was, the report recommendation was complied with...
Oh, do we, I don't think we need a vote?
No.
Yeah.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just a quick personal privilege, as Chair of Finance, then Counselor Tomlin and I can do a tag team here. We kept in committee, which was referred to the committee under Counselor McGee, that the DPW city engineer provide us with a list of unaccepted roads in the city. Chris Baker was before us. Carl Rossi was with us, but Chris presented. I hope everybody's got a copy of it. If not, I'll make sure everybody gets a copy of it. And it's an extensive list. Be careful, there are items on this row, on this list that are roads that the owners of the road don't want, don't want it to be accepted by the city. Prime one example, Holy Cross Ave, the diocese, the church wants to keep that private. That's their, for their use. However, there, as our request in committee is, we will continue to work with this list and continue to work with the engineer and the mayor, is if the ward councilors could grab a copy of the list and try and prioritize your wards as to, do you see something that stands out that your constituents may wish that the street be accepted? And some we already know, but some we don't... know, but some we don't know.
At the, at the risk of violating, it'll be milk and meat law, um, it, it would be nice if that list was segregated by wards, cause it's not. It's just, it's alpha. So it's, if you, if you want to do it, then just, I wish you just would amend it, or somebody would amend it to segregate it by wards. That would be.
Well, when I was counselor for Ward Four, I knew every street in my ward by heart.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't.
You know them all.
Too shy.
I'm just kidding, David. I'm just kidding.
Order here? Wait a second. Out of order, out of order. Um, no public safety committee reports, no public service committee reports. Hopefully we'll have, uh, a meeting soon on that. And, um, DGR, we, uh, we will be turning this back over to our, uh, senior colleague, uh, Counselor for Class of Seventy-Five, Holyoke Catholic, passing on to Class of Seventy-Three, Holyoke Catholic.
Talk about editorial, kind of.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for, uh, for listening.
I was Providence Hospital.
Pass it to Holyoke High School over here, I'm ready.
I did the best I could, so.
Nursery.
I was born in the old Providence Hospital. Does anybody know where it was? Right across from the post office.
That's right, that's right, yep.
Uh, we do have a committee, the DGR committee report. This is the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom is referred, uh, in order that the city council invite the new owner of the Valley Blue Sox, Matthew Durry, and his executive team to the DGR meeting prior to the twenty-twenty-three season to discuss McKenzie Stadium, increasing attendance and use of the field for Hoyoke students, et cetera, et cetera. Copy of, uh, this went to the, both the Parks and Rec Commissioners who were, uh, Tom Reynolds was with us and, uh, Mr. Drury was, was with us. But I'm not the chair of the committee, I'm sorry. Motion to receive that the order was complied with and turn over the, uh, presentation to our, our chair, Counselor Murphy Ramboletti.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Holyoke Catholic. All right. Um, it was a great, you know, albeit brief, meeting yesterday that we had, um, Matthew, and he took ownership last year of the Valley Blue Sox. Um, so we, uh, heard a lot of great updates from him. Um, the Valley Blue Sox have been here for almost ten years. Um, they're one of twelve in, uh, their league. Um, they have, uh, I think the statistic he gave us, thirty percent, um, get drafted in that league. Um, and they've had a lot of, uh, MLB drafts right here. Playing at Hoyoke, yes, it was in the presentation. Thank you. Um, you should all check it out. I believe our administrative assistants sent it to us. So, there you go. Um, they talked about, he talked about a few things. Um, their commitment to community engagement. Um, they do little league clinics. Um, they were, uh, a sponsor of the St. Patrick's Prayer Committee. Um, they have, um, different events that they host throughout the summer. Um, they're trying, he mentioned that he is trying to get more involved in the community. Um, in his second year as the owner. Um, exciting news, they got a new logo and mascot coming out, Dinger. I know you guys were wondering about that. Um, they ran a contest through the Gazette. I'm just giving you all of the, it's like you were here with me last night. Um, let's see, this year, he talked about a new player team room that has been constructed, um, on the, uh, in the stadium. We talked a little about challenges. Um, and some of those came up earlier tonight. Um, the playing surface, um, is, uh, in need of, um, some improvements or maintenance. Um, uh, the lighting was discussed, um, asset security, there's been a couple of reports of vandalism and break-ins. Um, uh, talked about just overall repairs needed for the grounds, um, the, the seating, updated seating. What I also thought was interesting, um, to get the word out, they're still looking for local host families. Um, we talked a little bit more about that. Right now, out of sixteen or seventeen, there's only two in Hoyoke. So if you're interested, you should check it out. Go on their website, see if you want to host a, a, a player. Um, and yeah, I think that's it for me. I will let my other members fill in the blanks. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, that was a very good committee report. I appreciate everybody being there last night. It was something that, that I filed. I know Pete co-filled it with me. I really appreciate that, as always. Uh, it was, uh, having this, uh, the way we structure that, the committee, uh, th- this is really the heart of it. When you allow people, their stakeholders, to come in to meet us and we get to meet them and we get to thank them for their investment, which is in the tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's, uh, it's really gratifying. Furthermore, we, we got to learn, I learned a lot as a, I mean, I go to three quarters of the games anyhow, but I learned a lot about the, about the team, forty-four games in sixty days, about, about the great young men that play, play for the team. They come from various parts of the country, California, Southeast, Washington State, and here in New England and in Massachusetts, including Massachusetts, Connecticut, and some other states. So it's, uh, it's a really fantastic wooden bat baseball league. It's probably second in line to the Cape Cod League, which is really historic. Uh, it's one of those classic baseball, uh, leagues that nobody's ever gonna surpass. But the New England Baseball League does its very, very best, especially being very new, as, as the chair said. Uh, i- it's a pretty new, relatively new league to Cape Cod League, which has been in place for decades. And, uh, it's had major league ballplayers left and right. There are kids, uh, college people, um, that are drafted with dreams of major league, playing major league baseball. So four were drafted from the Blue Sox last year and probably not our best team that we ever had. I, I think just a couple of most important things that we, we pointed out, what can, what can the city do for them? Well, you know, it's a combination of things. And of course, in, in trying fiscal times, although, I mean, we did hear from the mayor tonight, and we all appreciate to hear of the, of the surplus and some other good things happening with, with the, with the budget. But, but there's, there's, there's always challenges. And putting monies like this into a ballpark, we, we have to prioritize. And we know that there are many priorities, but I think we heard the finance chair speak a little bit earlier about how many youth teams, college teams, amateur teams, and now another amateur league, um, the Blue Sox playing on this surface. McKenzie Stadium has been traditionally the preeminent field in Western Massachusetts and Northern Connecticut, where, uh, young people have played for generations on a diamond unlike any other. And it's, but it can't just lie dormant. It has to be constantly improved and reinvested. And I'm hopeful that, I know the mayor listens to these meetings and, and gets the report from Jeff. I encourage everyone in this room to read the, read the, um, uh, report that was provided last night. It is kind of a, a PowerPoint, uh, put together by Mr. Drury, the owner. And I'm, I'm grateful that I was here, uh, to hear it. But, um, the, the meeting, while it was not a lengthy one, it was, it was a good solid hour and it was a pretty great discussion. And, uh, and I'm grateful for, again, for his investment, for the, the Blue Sox coming. I hope you get a chance to go to some games this year. June seventh, it starts, uh, there's, there's games, uh, on, on weekends, on Sunday afternoons. They're gonna be starting at one o'clock. It's, it's a lot, it's just a great family environment. There's so much entertainment on the field, off the field, uh, during the nights. I, I can't encourage, uh, people enough to, to attend. So I, hopefully I'll see other counselors down there besides Counselor Tomlin. Thank you.
I'll try to get there, Dave.
Counselor Rivera.
I actually go to those games all the time with my daughter. Um, but, so I, uh, I agree with the improvements in the field. I agree that McKenzie is one of the preeminent fields and has been within Western Mass, possibly wherever else he stated. Um, I agree with the funding and trying to improve the field. Um, for me, it's improving the field for the youth, um, more in a sense, and for the city of Hoyoke versus for an, an entity that comes to play on the field, right? Um, but the question comes to me is, I, I'm not sure that the youth use it as much as they used to. Uh, I remember playing youth baseball on that league. I remember playing high school baseball in the league on that field. Um, but I don't think youth baseball uses it as much as they used to. They don't have as many players as they used to. I, I think the varsity team only uses it during that season and that's it. But the rest of the year, it's mostly used by out of town or the Blue Sox, Elms, um, different entities. So I'm, I'm totally in a, in agreement with investing in the field, but for the youth of the you, for the use of the youth of the city of Hoyoke, more or less. Because at the end of the day, that's the most important piece for me. At the, like, I played on the field. The field is an awesome field, one of the, the highlights of the city. Um, but I guess the other question I had, did they say that, that the high school team would be able to use the duck, the, the, the team player, um, thing that they just built?
No one asked that last night. So it's not a no, but no one asked that specifically.
Cause it's on city prop, I mean, it's built on city property, so I would assume that students might.
It wasn't, it wasn't brought up last night, so.
All right.
We can email him. I mean, uh, can ask him. You can file an order, I don't know.
Nah, I won't file it. It's not that serious. But yeah, I guess for me, it's just some of that stuff, uh, protecting the investment of the people of the city, um, for me. Thank you.
Counselor Maldonado Vales.
Thank you, um, President McGivern. Um, just following that about our youth, we do have a Hoyoker on the team this year, um, Tayshawn Diaz. So Tayshawn Diaz, he's a senior Southern Connecticut, so I just wanted to give that shout out that we do have a Hoyoker on the team this year. So that's, congrats, Tayshawn.
And there was a discussion about, uh, not being on UConn. We can support that.
Got that right.
How about the Hoyoke, how about the Hoyoke Millers?
We talked about the Hoyoke Millers, too. We talked about a lot of things last night. It was a great conversation. Um, I, I gotta say something, and I don't remember the date, um, on the host, uh, families for, for the players. The, uh, the league requires that players have a host family. They're not allowed to do a dorm, or not allowed to put them in a hotel. They need a host family. There's a meeting, an orientation, but a meeting to find host families that picks cafe.
Unfortunately, it was tonight.
It was tonight. They found some.
Yeah, I'm sure folks can go on their website and reach out to someone about learning more.
But opportunities are still there. And, and high school first, McKenzie and Roberts always. High school seasons are done earlier and that, I think it's not, it doesn't interrupt by, by the, uh, Blue Sox, obviously. There may be some collegiate, uh, teams in there. And then the other team that is very much, um, Hoyoke is the Tri-County League plays there. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is that the committee report is, uh, complied with and adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Moving on to motions and orders. Item number twenty-two, introduced by Counselor Murphy Ramboletti.
Ordinance? Ordinance?
Ordinance.
If you want to read it.
Motion made second received committee on ordinance. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm getting a little rusty up here. The order is that the city council amend the ordinance two, three, three, six to reflect the streamlined process for disposition of tax title properties and other properties not needed by the city for municipal purposes and add a new section for the creation of an a butter lot sale program. The motion is received, refer to committee on ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-three, introduced by Counselor Murphy Ramboletti. Ordered that the city council declare a lot on East Hampton Road, surplus property available for disposition.
DGR.
DGR.
DG and R, the, we don't have the address. We're trying to get the addresses for these things, but it's, uh, map two, two-one-two, block zero-zero, zero-one. Motion received before the committee on DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-four, introduced by Counselor Bacon. The city complies with Mass General Law, Section sixty-two A, require environmental notification from its, uh, is filed for the school project, so the Secretary of Environmental Affairs can make a determination as to whether the environment impact report is required prior to any application for financial assistance. If the environmental notification, um, form is filed before May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the city council meeting, that is provided as a communication to the city council.
To finance, please.
Motion made second received for the committee on finance, same discussion.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
On, on item ten, I believe, um, we got that from Brendan Consulting?
Yes.
You still want to send that with that, finance?
That went to finance, too.
Oh, it did? Okay. Cause it sounds like they don't need.
Well, they're not directly responding to it, but they go together.
Okay. We'll take it up and, yeah, put it in finance and.
I figured that one went there, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion refer to committee finance. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-six, introduced by Counselor Bacon and Jordan, an ordinance to be created that requires the department head to report with incident reporting, explaining the clause, any loss to the department over five hundred dollars.
To ordinance?
Motion made second received for the committee on ordinance, same discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I missed, I think.
Item twenty-five, introduced by Counselor Bacon, I'm sorry, that the light at Lower Westfield Road and Homestead Ave be adjusted to allow more cars coming from Lower Westfield Road towards I ninety-one eastbound through the, through on the green light. It is reported only three cars can get through at times causing backups.
Um, refer to DPW and our engineer to evaluate, please.
Motion made second to receive, refer to DPW, adopt, refer to the Department of Public Works engineer, and also to where?
Um, public. Well.
Public safety.
Wouldn't be an ordinance. It, just to receive and adopt.
Fire Department, the alarm division, maybe, the fire department?
Okay, that's.
Alarm division.
Copy to the alarm division. Um, I think.
They look at the light.
The state weighs in on a lot of these lights, but the alarm division does work with them.
Yeah, so, um, and copy to the alarm division. Thank you for that.
Okay. With those amendments, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-seven, introduced by Counselor Bacon. Move the engine brake sign in front of seventy-two Lower Westfield Way, Road, sorry, closer to the intersection near the Union Center in the Old Sears, uh, Building. Request the legal department to notify WJB Trucking Company Feeding Hills to comply with no engine brakes ordinance.
Thank you. Um, this could be receive, adopt, and send to DPW. The location of that no engine brake sign is so close to the stop sign, they're already well into using the brake from the intersection. So I guess it would be receive, adopt, and send to DPW and a copy to legal.
Can I make a friendly suggestion?
Counselor Anderson Burgles.
Um, copy the commissioners as well. Of DPW, so that way they can see it. Cause what I'm being told is sometimes when the commissioner are, are aware of what you're trying to do, things get done more effectively. So I would also copy to the commissioners.
It's fine with me.
Motion is to receive, adopt, refer to DPW, copy to the commissioners, uh, copy to the engineer, and, I'm sorry, one more?
Legal.
And a copy to legal.
To help enforce our ordinances.
Got it.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-eight, introduced by Counselor Bacon, that our engineer evaluate the Whiting Farms Road, Farnum Drive, Tokeniki intersection to determine if a traffic light is warranted.
Thank you. Receive and refer to DPW and, and our engineer. This is a citizen request with all the added business going on up there and the traffic issues and safety issues to see if it's warranted at this point.
Motion is to receive, adopt, refer to the city engineer, and a copy.
Safety.
To the public safety.
And send to public safety also. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Uh, Mr. President, can we suspend the rules, take twenty-nine and thirty as a package? Receive and adopt them and refer them however I, I wrote it, so.
Motion made second to suspend the rules to take twenty-nine, thirty as a package. Both are introduced by Counselor Bartley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item twenty-nine, DPW add pads to the disabled.
For the disabled.
For the disabled, to the sidewalks at Congress, South Elm, and Gates, South Elm Street. This was recently reviewed by the Ward Three Counselor, DPW Superintendent. Item thirty, DPW replaces sidewalk on Queen Street between Quay and King Street. This was also recently reviewed with the DPW Superintendent.
Ever so briefly?
Uh, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I, so I want to receive and adopt. I, I do want to refer them to the Public Works Board, the Finance Committee, just for a copy and to the mayor. I do want to point out that I had a very pleasant, uh, tour of Ward Three with, uh, Carl. And it was, uh, he, he said it was very helpful. Uh, he took, he took a pile of notes and, and these are just some of the things that we touched on. Twenty-nine and thirty are both, Mr. President, uh, constituent requests to, to repair those various aspects of, of the sidewalk. And, uh, and I did have a chance to speak with the mayor tonight and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, I, I thanked him for the past, uh, investment and, uh, he said he would be supportive of future investments, so. That's it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On the motion to adopt and refer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-one, introduced by Counselor Bartley. The mayor provide the council with an update of the funding of the crosswalk on Homestead Avenue at the main gate of Hoyoke Community College. The city engineer provide any additional updates in terms of design and approvals as warranted. Refer to the city engineer and mayor, please send a communication to the council within the next thirty days.
The motion is to receive and adopt. The motion is to receive and adopt and then under discussion, ever so brief?
Motion made second receive, adopt, refer. Counselor Bartley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Th- this has been an ongoing issue. Um, we're, we're not talking I-391 double digit years, but we're, we're, we're closing in on that. Now, uh, so I, I'm, I'm hopeful that most of the council is pretty familiar with 303 Homestead Avenue. That's the address for the college. And then the, uh, flashing beacon, which is sometimes working, sometimes not, a- a- and sometimes it gets knocked over and sometimes it doesn't, uh, get knocked over, but it's now, now gone, um, in, at the, at the traffic island in front of 303 Homestead. So that is going to be removed. It's been redesigned by the city engineer. Uh, the lights are in place in the fire alarm division to put in the flashing beacons. We just have to get the financing in place to build the crosswalk and to rip up the deteriorated traffic islands that are in front of HCC. So I'm hopeful that with the Ward Five Counselor here by my side as per usual, and we can just get a little bit of traction on this. So, um, I'm hopeful that the mayor can just, uh, send a communication to us, I don't know, by the second meeting in, in, in June, and we can just hear, hear what's going on to try to get, get the financing in, in place, uh, for this. It really-
Me on this too?
Absolutely. So I, so it, it really would be, I mean, a real feather in all our caps if we could get this, uh, finally, uh, finally resolved. And again, this started originally as an order, Mr. President, myself and Counselor Lisi, uh, based upon a constituent request. A constituent is, oh, oh, she's very pleasant, but she does email me and, uh, we're, we're, we're trying. So we're, we're almost there, but we just got to get the, so we've got plans in place. We've got some of the equipment in place. We'd get some, get some financing for the, uh, for the crosswalk and then we're off to the races. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Tomlin?
Make of the order if you don't mind, if I could be added onto that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you, Pete. Yep.
Any further discussion?
No, just a communication. Come back to us.
Motion to receive, adopt, refer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 32 introduced by Counselor Bartley. City council considers suspending rules to allow for the counselor to attend the Hoyok Day at the Eastern States. The salute to Hoyok will take place on Tuesday, September 19th, with the parade kicking off at 6:00 PM.
Yeah. My motion is to receive and adopt under discussion.
Motion made second to receive and adopt, Counselor Bartley.
Uh, okay. So this is, this is something that I, I know, uh, sometimes we get a little jammed up at that time of year and, you know, we can always change our date, but that, this is, this parade is just really great. I have had a chance to speak with the administrative assistant and we're going to do something in hand and glove with the 150th Committee. So this will be, uh, I'm hopeful, um, kind of a part, part of that celebration. So we'll, we'll figure it out with the, with the Eastern States. It's the, forever it's going to be the second Tuesday in September. And, uh, this I think is the 10th year that we've, actually, it might be 11th year. Whatever it is, it's the 10th or 11th year we've had the, had the parade. I, I forgot with COVID involved, we, we, they missed one year. So, uh, so it's, it's always a really nice event and I'm, I'm very proud that we've, uh, we've kept it going these years. I just want to also indicate, uh, through, through the chair to my friend Kevin, I, I neglected, and I finally did it this week, to pass along our proclamations that we passed for the night away and for Jericho. So I, I finally got, got those out the door too. So that's my confession for the-
Any further discussion? And I think with suspending this meeting, uh, last year it worked out pretty good where we just leave it up to President McGee to, if needed, to call a special meeting on a different date.
You have the primary and at that potentially-
Yeah.
At that time as well.
Yeah. So there'll be a lot of juggling.
Yeah.
Which is not unusual.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, adopted. Um, item 33 introduced by Counselor Jordan, that the police chief provide the city council with a performance report on how ShotSpotter is performing and what we are learning about gun activity in the city so far. Please email the city council. All reports available ASAP for our review so we can be prepared for the discussion.
So I'd like to have this, uh, received, adopted, referred to the police chief with a copy to the mayor and I'm thinking maybe the public safety committee too. So, uh, if we want to have some follow-up discussion when we get that, but, um, I'm seeing portions of the report are being published in the newspaper and I would like to see the full, you know, and hopefully it sounds like they're getting monthly reporting. So it would be really helpful for us, uh, to keep tabs on what's going on. They had some really good maps and charts and, and otherwise. So I would like to, uh, kind of really roll up my sleeves and, uh, get into that.
Motion is to receive, adopt, refer to chief of police with a copy to the mayor and a copy to the public safety committee to discuss at the appropriate time.
And maybe to our administrative assistant, if you, uh, Jeff, if you could kind of help us to make sure they track down those, that, that would be appreciated to-
I think Jeff does that without asking.
Are they starting to publish some stuff? Okay. If that's true, then maybe they can send us some link.
Is there information up on the website on that? I thought there was some. I don't know if it's updated or how often.
Counselor Gibner?
Um, they do have some information on the website. It's just not very thorough.
Oh, okay.
The information that they're publicizing is, um, it's not compared to any previous years. It's, it's not-
No.
It's not very useful if you're trying to, to understand what kind of difference the technology is making.
Right.
I, um, actually did request some more transparent information, but not officially. So, um, I know I have for a while been requesting like a, a newsletter or, you know, that they update their site to share information that is more comparative because, I mean, just saying there were some, um, noises picked up by this technology isn't really, isn't really enough information to help anyone understand what the technology is doing. So hopefully we can get some more things.
And I think I saw one table in particular that had like 30 gun incidents in a month or some, something like this. Uh, you know, I want to make sure that I'm interpreting that correctly and I want to make sure I have the full report so that-
It's, it's noise incidences. It's not necessarily-
Well, I'm just saying this is what's being claimed. I, I'll, I'll reserve judgment as to how meritorious it is once I read the whole report, but, um, I want to have the benefit of that information because I'm, like you, I'm being asked these type of questions. And it might also be helpful for, if they had, by way of comparison, I don't know what Counselor Gibner asked for, but you know, some of the old statistics on how many calls and, and, and different things, some of that incident and see what the uptick is. Cause like, for example, we saw the other day over the weekend, this, this poor gentleman that got killed, uh, over here in, in Ward One, they're saying that here's a perfect example. Nobody had called this in. This gentleman was shot and killed and it was picked up on ShotSpotter. So, you know, this is what we're talking about, um, in terms of what is the impact of, of this and, and getting these reports and we, you know, objectively can really look at this together and see how this is making a difference. And, um, uh, and then we can weigh all that evidence, uh, uh, together. So, uh, look forward to getting those reports. Thank you.
Any further discussion? C- Counselor Rivera?
Just a second. Just with regards to what happened over the weekend, I actually know the individual. He's one of the kids from the neighborhood I grew up in, um, that passed away. So, um, it kind of sucks for me, right? Cause like when things like this happen in the community, usually I either know them or I know them through another person. Um, but some of the response I'm getting is that response times were not fast enough is, and, that's why I, I agree with you on that report, right? Where it's like, I want to see like, if you're reporting this, what is the response time to the report too as well? Cause that is the idea, right? If, 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 if it's going off, then the response time should be ideal in a way where it's saving lives. Cause this is what, this is what we were sold on at the, at the same time, right? Um, but thank you for that.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is receive, adopt to chief of police, copy to the mayor, copy to, uh, public safety for discussion. And I, and I think that was it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 34 introduced by Counselor McGee, DPW repave Harvard Street, ASDP.
Receive, adopt and refer to public works.
Motion made second to receive, adopt, refer to the Department of Public Works. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 35 introduced by Counselor McGee, the police, uh, department stationed a car Mackenzie near the intersection of Portland and Mackenzie in order to prevent cars ignoring all the stop signs on Mackenzie, Magnolia and Portland before someone gets hurt. These cars and trucks completely ignoring stop signs, particularly on Magnolia of Portland.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make a friendly amendment because I, this is, this, uh, I'm going to add Lawler and Martin Street to that. Cause those, there's a stop signs that are ignored every single day, multiple times. So if I could, if I could just make that amendment, please?
Friendly amendment made in second, just to add Lawler and Martin. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I should have been added to this, um, order. That, and I wanted to receive and adopt.
Mo- motion add, Counselor Anderson Burgos if necessary. And then, uh, the motion is to, uh, is receive, adopt and refer to the, uh-
Arm and Public Works.
Take, take to, um, uh, the police department.
EBW.
Uh, the police department and then, uh, a, a copy to, uh, public safety for a report in maybe 30 days.
Can, can I make a rhetorical amendment?
Go ahead.
My, my rhetorical amendment is can we get a traffic department back in the police department? Thank you. You know, we need our, we have an ordinance that requires, it isn't just these streets. It's the whole thing, everybody, right?
Look at the budgets.
I mean, we're all in agreement that this needs to be done. We need our traffic officers and our traffic division back in the police department.
How much we make?
We have major speeding, sign violations, quality of life. This stuff is something that I think everybody in this room is in agreement on. And, and if the mayor can help us with that and the budget, then, you know, and we're going to get a full complement of officers, let's get this done, right? So it's much bigger than just this. Uh, this is good. I'm very supportive of this, but it, it's the over, I mean, I'm hearing from constituents non-stop as I'm, you know, talking to people over and over. It's, we want speed enforcement, people not following basic traffic laws, just, you know, noise, uh, from, you know, loud music and all this stuff. This stuff needs to be enforced. It's huge quality of life.
Even FedEx trucks and Amazon-
Exactly.
Have flown by me like top speed.
Yep.
Like the officers should be out there collecting or passing out tickets like crazy. You know how much money they can rake in?
Pay for itself.
Well, I mean, but it'll, it'll address the issue.
Right.
Right? Either.
Exactly.
Well, they're not speeding the 27 Downing Avenue with Jenny's package.
That's right.
Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt as amended. I think all well said and well needed and traffic department would rhetorically would be great. On that motion though, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. The chair recognizes Counselor McGivern. Counselor McGivern makes a motion to suspend the rules to take up 37, 40, 41 and 42 as a package, refer to committee and finance.
Second.
Motion made second. Let's not discuss it. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Counselor McGivern, yes, Chair. Make a motions to suspend rules and take up 38 and 39 as a package for the purpose of adopting.
Second.
Motion made second that these are the two injured on duties, one from the fire department and one from the, uh, from the police department. Uh, we had that earlier discussion. Uh, this evening, police department is-
Looks like there are two.
Is that a duplicate or?
It's like a duplicate almost, but.
Uh, it does kind of look like it, right?
The second one- One has an exact dollar amount.
It's a little, there is a little difference. Yeah. But there's a lieutenant de sergeant and patrolman. Doesn't tell me how many patrolmen, but it looks like maybe just one.
Did you say one of these related to the fire department?
The, the, well, the first one, 38 is the police department. It's-
Second.
There are, there are nine. There are nine officers right now. Uh, and then I apologize, they are both police department. The second one is the police department. So maybe there was a duplication. Um.
Do you want to table one and send one to finance? Like pick the bigger of the two and prove that or?
The total is different.
Yeah.
Yeah. One is for 10, one is for nine. So it's, the weeks are different.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're, they're in April. And then the, the first one is, is, is from, uh, May 13th, the period. And the second one, the period is April-
Oh, okay.
29th, April 29th. So motion is received, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Pass the second reading. Court could call the robe. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor. If you vote no, you're voting to deny.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner? Jordan?
Yes.
Malton Aravales?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Fuello?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Jay Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By default, you've adopted the, uh, the, both the orders and, uh, approved the, uh, transfers for injured on duty. We have one late filed, I believe.
Motion adjourned?
Uh, no.
Just thought I'd try.
No, this, this, we, we talked about this already. Uh, this is filed by Counselor Israel Rivera. It's late filed A. It's an order that the city council approved the CPA request for Scotts Tower Anniversary Hill Phase Two, uh, with the City Hoyok, uh, Conservation Commission and Cast, Castrol Land Trust for the open, the open space project that we're all very familiar with it. Uh, motion to receive and-
Suspend the, suspend the rules.
Purpose of-
Taking final act.
Final action.
Taking final action this evening. On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The request is for $44,500. The emergency funding is for the acquisition of 7.24 acres of forest land associated with one headquarters of Daybrook adjacent to Anniversary Hill Park Community Field. These park, these parcels constitute some of the last remaining unprotected open space surrounding the above, uh, section of Daybrook before it joins the sanitary sewer on Hicks Avenue. No wonder we have so much water going down to the wastewater treatment plant. Acquisition by the city will allow for inclusion of these properties into overall restoration plans for the Anniversary Hill Park. These parcels are surrounded by the park and contain important trails, infrastructure that allows a better footpath, footpath access to the main entrance underneath I-91 from the community field. Now that the appraisals have been completed, relative owners have agreed to the sale of the land and the intent of this application is to acquire CPA fundings for the recently submitted municipal vulnerability preference, uh, MVP grant, which requires a match. Counselor Rivera?
So-
Urgency.
Make a motion to pass the first reading?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made second to pass the, uh, first reading. Counselor Rivera?
Whatever. Mo- motion to pass second reading, I guess.
No, no. We gotta take a vote on the first reading.
First reading, yeah.
Uh, so, so wait. Clarify for me on this. Am I elaborating on what it is? Okay, thank you. So, uh, more or less this is a quick match. This is a, a match grant that's being asked, uh, from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. This property is to be added to the larger project that Yoni has been working on. He has, um, graciously helped the city, um, raise two, over $2 million to start this project and, and follow through with the Scotts Tower project. Um, this was supposed to come together with the other one because they presented the same day at the same time, not exactly the same time, but on the same, um, meeting date. Um, so I think there's a time crunch with this one, uh, which is why they wanted me to make sure that we follow through to try to get this done today. Cause if not, then we have to wait two weeks for it to be refiled again and then wait for it to go to finance. Cause not always does it get voted on the same day. So they're hoping that we're able to do that now, um, just so that they're able to get the money for the match grant.
If you tell us the time crunch, that's all I need to hear.
Yep, that happens.
Any further discussion? If not, on the motion to pass first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Also moved.